Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our June meeting. Before we move into items for discussion tonight, I'm going to ask Mark Atkins to do our prayer and Kathy, will you lead us in the pledge tonight? You'll stand with us, please.
Father, we've just come to you today with gratefulness, Lord, and just the blessings in life to live in this community, Father, and just to have the people serving this community, all of our fire, police protectors, our first responders, Lord, the staff here in our city, all the employees and those that lead them. But we also just ask a special prayer tonight for those of us on the council as we process the decisions of the town. Lord, we lift up the Hardeman family tonight with the loss of Helen Hardeman, Father. We just pray for Gene and his family. Father, we also want to lift up all those that gave the ultimate sacrifice on this memorial weekend, Father, all those that are no longer with us that paid the ultimate sacrifice price for our country. We ask that you go with us now, continue to bless us and forgive us where we fail you. Amen.
Thank you, Mark and Kathy. We will move into our agenda. I don't know that I have ever seen as many contracts on one agenda since I've been here. So, sit back and relax. It's going to be a long meeting. So, our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 33, parcel 41.00, to go from R4 with ESO to PRD with ESO. It's requested by Janet Abraham and it's containing approximately 1.98 acres. The property is located at 290 Rocky Fork Road and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request for a PRD with 10 single-family attached units and five buildings. This would be, access would be from Rocky Fork Road via a private drive. Units would be brick or stone and concrete siding with at least 20% of the exterior is brick or stone. This is one of the questions. We've talked about this several times and the only condition left that hasn't been addressed is regarding the potential stream that is across the northeastern corner of this property. At this time, I have not received any additional information on that. So, if I do receive that, I certainly will let you all know that. But at this time, there's, other than that, there's no other changes or anything from when you looked at this on first reading.
Okay. Questions for Kevin on this? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two, which is consideration of resolution relative to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 55, parcel 29.02. Kevin?
Yeah, this is the plan of services for the annexation, which is the next item on your agenda. This would be, details all of services the town would be providing, which in this case is everything except water, which will be provided by Consolidated Utility District.
Questions for Kevin? Okay, we'll move on to item three, consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PUD zoning of property located on Tax Map 55, parcel 29.02, requested by Larry Davis, containing approximately 37 acres. The property is located at 3545 Animalville Road and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yeah, this is the annexation and zoning request for this piece of property. It's about 37 acres. As you said, it is at 3545 Animalville Road. That's just about 300 feet north of the intersection with the Inez Drive. The sewer for this area would be pumped to the existing pump station at Amberton as part of the Amberton development until such time as gravity sewer is extended along Stewart Creek and Rocky Fork Creek, which does border this property. This property is currently developed as a winery and the request of PUD would be for that winery as well as five commercial buildings totaling 20,810 square feet, a 6,300 square foot event venue with a 35,000 square foot lawn area in the front of that, horse stables and riding trails, and then 66 townhomes. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval with six conditions. The uses within-
[inaudible 00:01:43]
Sorry.
It's okay.
I was just trying to check comments.
Weird hearing myself talk there. The uses within the five commercial buildings are limited to uses as allowed in the C4 zoning district with the additional allowed uses of wine sales and wine tasting. Events are required to end at 10:00 PM with the exception that events occurring indoors can extend to 11:00 on Friday and Saturday nights. Townhomes are required to be a for sale product and owner occupied. We ask them to show the hundred yard floodplain elevation. They show the boundary, just not the elevation. All townhomes are required to have a double width driveway in addition to the garage and that a traffic study for the entire development is required to be submitted with the first site plan. Again, nothing has changed on this since you saw it on first reading.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is consideration of resolution in memorandum of ordinance 21-17 relative to annexation and PUD zoning of property located on Tax Map 55, parcel 29.02. That's our housekeeping item. Then we'll move on to item five, which is consideration of resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on Tax Map 54, parcel 17.00. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a plan of services for the annexation, which is the next item on your agenda. This is just one tract of land, about 10 and a half acres. The town would be providing all services to this property upon effective annexation date except for water, which is again served by CUD. The planning commission did recommend this.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we will move on to item six, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 17.00, requested by Sean Collins on behalf of James E. Parker, containing approximately 10.24 acres. The property is located at 8965 Rocky Fork, Animalville Road, and this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the annexation request at 8965 Rocky Fork, Animalville Road against about 10 and a half acres, about 10.2 acres rather. We, planning commission did review this, did recommend it to you, and the zoning would be R3.
Questions for Kevin on this? Okay, we'll move on to item seven, which is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 21-19 relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 17.00. That's our housekeeping item. We'll move on to item eight, which is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Town of Smyrna Municipal Code Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 6, Stormwater Management Ordinance, and this is a second reading. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is when we had our audit about eight months ago. TDEC came down with our five-year audit. They found some items needed to have some contextual revisions to it. One of them was the public information and education portion, the environmental response plan, and the grading permit procedures plan. These are supporting documents to the ordinance.
Questions for Tom? Okay, thanks. Item nine is consideration of an ordinance adopting property tax rate for the fiscal year 2021-22. Second reading. Rex?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same as it was last year at 70.07 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property.
Questions for Rex on this? Okay, item 10 is consideration of ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2021-22, and this is a second reading.
Okay, Mayor, the, we've discussed the budget quite in depth and we've been working on it since November of last year. We've come through the retreat and the first reading on it and in your packet I do have some minor changes to it that, to be made from the first reading to the second reading. Is there any questions on any of those?
Any questions on the changes for Rex? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to item 11, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Galls Incorporated relative to uniforms for the police department.
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have a contract with Galls for our uniforms and equipment and we would like to extend that contract one more year. We've had very good success with them.
Questions for Chief on this?
Thank you.
Thanks. Item 12 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Solitude Lake Management relative to the annual maintenance for the pond at J.J. McWilliams Old Rock School Park. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have been doing this product, I mean this contract for about four years now and we use Solitude Lake Management to do the work and basically come over and apply some chemicals at the quarter acre pond over at the library and we'd like to continue doing that. It just saves us a lot of work on the pumps and the aeration system in that pond.
Questions for Mike? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item 13, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Jason Lee McKinney Band relative to the 2021 Barbecue Fest.
Yes, ma'am. Now that we're back kind of reopening some things, you're going to see more of these performance agreements come before you, but obviously Jason and his band have played for us several times and they're a local band, got a lot of followers, but also a diverse set list, so we'd be glad to have them play at that event. They're down in the Depot District a lot anyway and it's kind of home to them, so for $1,000 they'll pay, or play for two and a half hours and take a couple of breaks during the event.
I think Mark said he'd play for less than that and no breaks.
I only got one good leg right now, but keep the beat.
It's one bass drum, that's good.
That's it.
Any questions from Mike on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 14, and which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a performance agreement with Missy Garnett Music relative to the music and sound for the 2021 Independence Day celebration.
Yes, ma'am, and you are probably well aware of Missy Garnett. She's played several times as well, but we thought this year would be good to have her back. She's really interactive with the crowd and the citizens and reopening, that's a good thing, so we've asked her to fill out the agreement and she agreed to do that for the Independence Day celebration on July 2nd. Three and a half hours, they'll provide sound and music for this one and then help us out during the fireworks. They usually provide sound for that for $1,500.
Questions for Mike? Okay, item 15 is consideration of resolution authorizing the town to file an application for a TDEC grant relative to the park property at Cedarstone Park.
Yes, ma'am. This is required per the grant application, have a resolution that's passed by the town council. We've got to have this completed by August 3rd and turned in, so we wanted to get this before the council to make sure they had the resolution complete if they so desire. Appreciate legal putting this together for us. Just a reminder what this grant is for. It's a TDEC grant, local programs grant with Partas, so it's 50/50 match, 500,000 will be put in by the state and then 500,000 by the town. I'll remind you, this is impact fees for tennis and pickleball courts out at Cedarstone Park, which was in the master plan of that park originally. We have three years from the signing of a contract if you do get the grant to complete the project. That's a change. It used to be two years. I like the three years because when you have a grant, there's a lot of paperwork involved and inspections and things like that. It's a great project. I hope we're able to secure the grant. It's much needed for sure.
Questions for Mike on this? Move on to item 16, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with North Alabama Fire Equipment Company Incorporated relative to the fire department turnout gear, coats, pants, suspenders, bunker boots, and fire hoods. Chief?
And again, we're going to bring some annual bids to y'all. We'd like to ask this evening the council to give the mayor permission to sign the contract with North Alabama for the turnout gear.
Questions for Chief? Okay, we'll move on to item 17, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with CMS relative to the fire department uniforms.
Again, an annual bid, we have been working with CMS for several years and we are here. They were not our lowest bidder, but we would like to ask if we could continue to work with CMS for another year.
Questions for Chief? Item 18 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Garland DBS relative to the roof repairs for Fire Station 5 and 6.
Yes, ma'am. Again, we're having some roof problems at 5 and 6 and we've got with building and grounds and they got us a cost to do the repairs and we'd like to ask council to give the mayor permission to sign the contract.
Any questions on this one? Okay, item 19 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the completed TDEC general permit for open fracture repair, class 5, underground injection well permit to TDEC Division of Water Supply Ground Water Management Section. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. In order, every once in a while, we have sinkholes that open up in rightaways or drainage easements and in order for us to come in and be able to close those up to follow TDEC procedures, we get a permit from TDEC that just gives us the ability to go in any time one of them opens up to be able to make those repairs and that's what this application is for.
Questions for Tom on this?
That's just broad, not anything specific.
Correct, it's just broad.
Other questions? Okay, we will put that on the agenda and move on to item 20, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension contract with Rollins Excavation Company ending June 30th, 2022.
Yes, Rollins Concrete performs our concrete work around town, if anything, from sidewalk repair, curbing, roadway, driveway apron, that sort of thing, whenever we have any issues that come up or adding new sidewalk. They received our annual contract for that work and we're just asking for a one-year extension with them.
Questions for Tom on this one? Okay, item 21, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to approve Neil Schaefer as the highest ranked firm to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for the ITS Phase 3, 4, and 5 project.
Yes, currently, as you know, we're working on ITS Phases 1 and 2. We are finishing up the Traffic Operations Center, putting fiber in around town to interconnect some of the traffic signals. This Phase 3, 4, and 5, we're currently in rightaway phase, completing it in preparation for going to notice to proceed to construction phase. We need to get a construction and engineering inspector onboard so they can help us to bid the project when we do get notice to proceed to construction phase. We went out to RFQ and the committee ranked Neil Schaefer as the top respondent.
Questions for Tom on this? Item 22 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement to include additional fiber drops to interconnect traffic signals into the integrated traffic management system.
Yeah, this is a part of ITS Phase 1 and 2. United Communications had come in and put some loops, some rings of fiber around for the town to be able to use and now that ring is in place in order for us to connect our traffic signals to that fiber, they have to perform splices on the existing fiber, drop it down to the existing cabinet, and that's the quote, "to perform it at 12 different intersections."
Questions for Tom on this? This doesn't have anything to do with that, but it made me think of this and I forgot to call you today. The light, if you're sitting at the light to go over the railroad track between Smyrna Printing and Design and the arcade?
Okay, yeah.
It was, it happened to me once. Would that be Washington on that side too?
Yeah, Washington.
Both sides? It happened to me the other day and then this morning I saw it happen to a motorcycle. If you don't hit, hit it just at the right spot, it'll cycle you through.
Okay.
So, like if you pull too far forward, but like the motorcycle was sitting there and it never got, it never caught him, so he made a big U around and so.
Okay, we'll check that out.
FYI. I don't know why that made me think of that. Item 23 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with United Communications to install additional fiber for the ITS Phase 1 and 2 project.
Currently, there is Comcast in the area for about five different signals that we could tie to, but unfortunately, as you know, we don't have an agreement with Comcast anymore. We're doing a month-by-month basis, so what we look to doing is go ahead and having United Communications install the remaining fiber we need to connect the signals for the ITS Phase 1 and 2 project and that way we don't have to worry about whatever recurring costs we might have with Comcast. We just go ahead and have this in place with United Communications. So, this quote would be to add the additional fiber to five different signals.
Questions for Tom on this one? Okay, we'll move on to item 24, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Stubblefield Construction LLC relative to the replacement of the Valley Green subdivision sign on Wildwood Drive.
Hey, Mayor and Council, this contractor's agreement is for the replacement of the subdivision sign. It was removed during the construction of Eden Springs Road and this is part of the rightaway agreement we had with the subdivision to replace it.
Question for Charles on this? Item 25, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute change order number two with Jones Brothers Contractors LLC relative to the Sam Ridley Parkway widening project.
Right, Mayor, this change order covers items that were not accounted for in the original construction plans and also there was an error in the design survey file which caused the contractor to overexcavate in areas and come back with additional mineral aggregate to bring the project up to grade.
Any questions on that one? Okay, we will move on to item 26, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a maintenance agreement with TDOT for the frontage road described as Seven Oaks Boulevard from Rocky Fork Road, Enon Springs Road West, following along the I-24 westbound to its terminus.
The Town of Smyrna has annexed this TDOT frontage road for the purposes of maintenance and police informants and this is just the formal contract between the town and TDOT.
Questions for Charles on this one? Okay, item 27 has been pulled, so we'll move on to item 28, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Rockwell Automation relative to the technical support of the water treatment plant.
Yes, ma'am. This is a renewal contract. Rockwell handles all the control panel equipment for the plant, the booster stations, and the tank sites.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, we'll move on to item 29, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with JMB Tanker relative to the water treatment plant lagoon sludge removal.
Yes, ma'am. We rebid that this year on May 6th and J.B. Tanker was the low bidder.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this one? My favorite is item 30 and 31. I look forward to these every year. So, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following contracts relative to the water treatment plant chemicals. Carmuse is calcium oxide lime. Univar is hydrofluoric acid. Item 3, Calgon Carbon Corporation, powder activated carbon. Nexair, carbon dioxide, and diacitric acid. Anybody have questions?
You thought Calgon was something else?
Yes, take me away, please. Okay, no questions for item 30. We'll move on to item 31, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following chemical contract renewals for the water and wastewater treatment plants for 21-22. At the waste, at the water treatment plant is Univar, which is sodium chloride, Dico, which is sodium hypochlorite. Hawkins ADC is sodium hydroxide, hydrogen peroxide, and calcium thioculfate. SNF Polidine is clorofollic?
Clorofloc.
Clorofloc, thank you. Oh, is that a new one? Goldbrinson?
Goldbrinson.
Is aluminum chlorohydrate and at the wastewater treatment plant, SNF Polidine, emulsion polymer, and NIKM is liquid aluminum sulfate. Any questions? Okay.
Esther could have spent good money getting that education.
That's right. My high school chemistry teacher would be excited. Item 32, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with IMNE relative to the mechanical work for the water and wastewater treatment plants. Mike?
Yes, ma'am. IMNE does do the mechanical work for both plants.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Then we'll move on to item 33, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Thompson Cat relative to the maintenance for the water treatment plant backup generators.
Yes, ma'am. This is a sole source. This is for preventative annual maintenance for the generators at the plant, the raw water pump station, and the Mason Tucker booster pump station.
Okay. Questions for Mike on that one? Okay, item 34, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an engineering proposal with Thomas and Hutton relative to upgrades to the sewer lift station 1R.
Yes, ma'am. We're doing 4R right now, so 1R's next. 1R is the lift station that Nissan feeds into. Has not been updated since the 80s, so it's time to give this one a good going over and get it upgraded.
I hope not everything from the 80s needs to be upgraded.
Let's hope not.
Me too. We'll move on to item 35, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Brenda Walsh on, as acquisition agent for utilities easements relating to the North Lowry Street water line project.
Yes, ma'am. This is one of three items on the agenda for the North Lowry Street easements. Brenda does a great job as an acquisition agent for, and we're recommending her for this project.
Questions for Mike on that one? We'll move on to item 36, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Boozer and Company for review appraisal services for utilities easements for the North Lowry Street water line project.
Again, this is North Lowry Street. It's for one of the water model project, excuse me, projects. SRF does require review appraisals, so that's why you'll see an appraiser and a review appraiser, so this should be an SRF-funded project.
Okay. Item 37, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Linco Technology relative to the upgrades to the Toke software?
Yes, ma'am. This is our backflow software. The backflow program is required by TDEC and the current one we have is about 30 years old and no longer supported, so it's time to upgrade.
Questions for Mike on this one? Okay, we'll move on to item 38, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the following contracts for materials for the utility department, water and sewer, United Systems, GNC Supply, Core &amp; Main, Southern Pipe, Fortoline, and Ferguson Waterworks, Gas, GNC Supply, United Systems, Richards Manufacturing, Hubel Gas, Carotest, and EYSCO, Honeywell, Elster, American, and Mercury.
Yes, ma'am. This is annual bid stuff for gas and water sewer maintenance.
Any questions on any of those for Mike? Okay, we will move on to item 39, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement with Dan Weaver Services for Water Leak Survey Services.
Yes, this is an extension for Dan Weaver. He does a great job for us finding leaks that are harder to find, that don't come to the surface, so we're recommending him again.
Questions for Mike on this? Item 40 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with Tennessee Water Wastewater Agency Response Network.
This is a mutual aid agreement that we want to be a part of. It is for water and wastewater. It's across the state, but we would provide in case of an emergency, it would be regional assistance. It would be broken down by East Tennessee, Middle Tennessee, and West Tennessee. Murfreesboro, Metro, Water and Sewer, Rutherford County, EMA, they're all members of this, so it's a good thing to help our neighbors if we've got an emergency.
Questions for Mike? Okay, we'll move on to item 41, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a support agreement with Experitech relative to the SCADA software?
Yes. We had an agreement when we installed this and we actually let the agreement lapse, so we need to renew this agreement for software support. It includes update and protection for the gate stations and district stations. It includes update and protection for the gate stations and district stations. We have three gate stations and 17 district stations now, so it's important that we keep this updated.
Any questions on this one? Okay, moving on to item 42, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Badger Meter relative to the water meters and parts.
So when we did the original annual bid of materials, the water folks did not get the meter bids in, so we rebid the meters. We are recommending to go with Badger. They are not the low bidder. However, they are, they do provide a superior accuracy, especially during low flow over the other meters that bid, so we're recommending to stay with them. That's what we currently use now.
Okay. Anybody have questions in regards to that? Okay, item 43 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Randy Button and Associates for appraisal services for the utility easements along North Lowry Street.
And this is the appraisal services that go along with the North Lowry Street job.
Item 44 is consideration and approval of classification and compensation plan for the town's positions for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022. Jeff?
Mayor and Council, as is customary at the second reading of the budget, we do include the compensation and classification plan. It's presented for your approval. This plan does set the pay grades, the minimum starting salaries and the top salaries for each of our pay grades, and bringing that to you for your approval this evening.
Questions for Jeff? I know they put a lot of work into this. Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to item 45, which is consideration and approval of an amendment to the town's retirement savings plan document to permit a Roth option under the 457B, as well as changing the in-service distribution age to 59.5.
So Mayor and Council, excited to bring a few enhancements to our retirement savings plan for employees. After a recent review, there are a few things that we can do to improve our plans that are actually becoming more common in the marketplace. One of those is adding a Roth option for our 457B, so that people have some post-tax opportunities to save for retirement, as well as the pre-tax. And then also changing the in-service distribution age from 65 to 59 and 1/2, so folks can get to their hard-earned and saved monies a little bit earlier in retirement.
Questions for Jeff? Okay, we'll move on to item 46, which is appointment of one member and one council member to the Board of Directors of the Limeball Public Library to serve a three-year term. You will see a letter from Rita Shacklet, the Director of Libraries, in your packet as to who they are recommending to serve on the board. Item 47 is discussion regarding traffic studies. Who's taking that? Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Hercules, it asked me to put this on the agenda for discussion. There's been a lot of questions and things about when do we require these, and when should we require them, and that sort of thing. And so I wanted to put this, put this on the agenda for you for discussion. I did do some research, some of the surrounding communities, and it's kind of a mixed bag. Some folks do require at rezoning, some don't. For example, Columbia does, Clarksville does, Franklin and Mount Juliet do. Lebanon does not. New Orleansville does not. Nashville requires, basically, does not require a traffic study at rezoning, but it does require the developer to provide a little bit of information, as in the current zoning could generate this much traffic, and the proposed zoning would generate this much traffic. But there's nothing beyond that, really. Just kind of a trip generation number only. And then if it trips, or if those trips generated meet the minimum standards or minimum where traffic study is required, they require when the development plan comes in. So it's kind of a mixture of the two. So that's kind of what we found. Murfreesboro doesn't, they basically have done it at zoning, and they've done it at site plan or plan or approval. They've kind of done both. They really didn't seem to have a clear delineation. They do it one way or the other. So, you know, that's kind of, and the ones that do require them, for the most part, it is on, when there is a definitive development plan like a PUD, some type of PUD, not like, for example, an R1 to an R3 or something like that. So, yeah, that's kind of what I've found from the other communities around us. Again, there's not a clear, everybody does it one way or the other. So currently, we have typically done it at the, when the development plan comes in after the zoning is approved. But obviously, that's up for discussion and why it's on the agenda tonight, so.
From your department's perspective, knowing that some of council would like to see it when it comes to us, what does that do to you all? Does it help? Does it hurt? Does it matter?
It doesn't, that, from our perspective, either way, it doesn't matter. It's really more, it would require the developer to have it done before they submit it to us. So it's really affects them more than it does us. We would review it, obviously, earlier in the process, because we would have it earlier in the process, so we would look at it. But it does, I wouldn't say it helps or hurts either way from our perspective, as far as our review process or anything like that.
From a developer's perspective, maybe other than they're going to have to do it earlier, if, you know, I think most of the time, projects, you kind of know when you're talking to them whether it's a project that's going to kind of work or not going to work.
Right, yeah, certainly. And, you know, when I meet with folks, which they don't always come in to meet with me, so they sometimes just apply. But when I do meet with them, if it's a project that I think I can support, I tell them that. If it's a project I don't think I can support, I tell them that, too. And so, and then if it's a project I think is going to need a traffic study, I tell them that on the front end. I certainly, if it's the size of a project that's probably going to kick that requirement in, I tell them. So for me, I guess, a traffic study at the front end, or maybe at the development plan end, it doesn't really affect how I see a project. I think it's a good project or it's not a good project, and I'm, if it's a good project, it's going to require a traffic study or not, it's going to be a good project or something I can support, and vice versa if it's not. So if a project comes in that they want to apply this, I don't think I can support, even if they have a traffic study with it, I'm probably still not going to support it, so.
Okay. Mark and Tim, you both serve on the planning, and knowing that for some council members, it gives them a little more comfort level seeing it when it comes to us, do you all see an issue with that?
Currently, we have, we have triggers, do we not, as far as if, if we're looking at a certain number of units that are going to be built or things like that? Are we talking about maintaining those triggers? And is this in addition to it, or is this?
Yeah, I would think we would keep the same requirements as far as when one would be required, which is basically, it's 100 trips per day at the peak hour is kind of what triggers it. Typically, just for, that's about 100-unit residential development, or, you know, it really depends on the use as to what it triggers, but that's one example. So I think we, I don't think you would change that. I think this is really just, when does it come in during the process is really the only thing you would be changing.
You know, we also look at these, as they do come in, we look at them to see, even without a traffic study, many times, we'll, we'll offer up to Kevin his opinion on, will it need a turn lane? Will it need a left or a right, or whatever? And we have those discussions of planning anyway, but I think from a planning perspective, if the council saw fit to want to see one earlier, what's the harm in that? And then, but, so far, I think it's worked. So it's just kind of, kind of like Kevin, it's, we're probably going to see one anyway, but if everybody prefers to see it sooner, that's okay, too.
You know, there've been a few controversial projects which have come in, and I think that possibly having that traffic study would have made the decision a little bit easier and possibly even more palatable to the public when it was presented. And, I don't know, I just, I, I think it would be a good thing for us, probably taking into account the triggers that y'all were talking about, for sure.
That it's only required at the same, if it would be a trigger?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Jerry, Raquel, anything?
Kind of like HG, it might make the decision a little bit easier if we have it.
There have been times, too, that a traffic study dictates one thing, but we still ask for more. That's happened before, too, so.
Well, I think that gives, if it's done on the front end, it gives council the opportunity to weigh in on that, too, as opposed to, you know. I think transportation is just such a huge thing right now with the way in which that we're growing and all. If the two of you that are on planning don't see an issue, and it's not going to affect the planning department, then I'd like to see us move forward with it, if y'all are comfortable with putting it on the agenda. I do think we would have to look at, at what, at what point, what date are we starting this? Just like with, you know, whenever we do the other stuff.
Sure. Yeah.
Where does it fall in the process? That sort of thing? So is that something y'all can, or have you already done that?
Well, I mean, I don't, I really don't think you have to change anything in the ordinance or anything to make this happen. So, I mean, if this is how, unless you all want to take a vote on it to clearly say something, I mean, I think we can move forward from today, anything submitted after today, you know? We've already got, you know, some projects in the pipeline for next, or next week, rather. So, and one of those, we've already told them, we need a traffic study, because it's about 100 units, so.
So it's nothing that we're going to have to vote on?
Oh, no.
Okay.
So, to be clear, when a developer brings it to planning, and are we talking specifically about a PRD and a PUD?
It would be anything, any type of zoning request, well, any zoning request, new, a PUD-type request, where we know what we're getting from the standpoint. You know, if someone asks for, say, a property to be rezoned C2, we don't know if it's going to end up being a high-traffic generator or not, and that sort of thing. And so typically with those, and what most communities, even that require them on the PUDs, don't require it for that type of zoning. But it would require it, you know, at a site plan or a subdivision stage, if, you know, if that ends up being, you know, a large traffic generator, even if it's zoned R3, but it's a 300-unit subdivision, it's going to require a traffic study. So it would come at the subdivision stage or the site plan stage, which, again, would really just be a planning commission review at that point, because those would come back to council. But for any PUD, where we would know what's happening, what's coming, and it's going to hit that trip generation threshold, it would require it with the rezoning application. And again, some cities do require that. So, I mean, it's not something that we would be completely on an outlier on.
So to be clear, with either a PRD or a PUD, with the original submission to a planning commission, they would bring their preliminary or their concept or whatever along with the traffic study, correct?
Correct.
And then conversely, if we were, if we had something that was already zoned R3, but we knew it was going to generate, let's just say, we knew that it was a 300-home subdivision, which you could do with an R3 easily.
Sure, sure.
And it would probably trigger the numbers necessary to do a traffic study. Are they bringing that as well on the front end?
Yes. They would be bringing that with, if it's an R3, again, it would just come to planning, but, because it's already, if it's zoned R3.
Right.
But yes, they would, with that first phase of that subdivision, they would have to put that, we would, really, you're going, in an R3, you're going to see a sketch plat for the whole 100 acres, and then they'll section it up or whatever. And so that would really be when they would submit it, at that time, when you're seeing the whole development plan. If, because, again, if the sketch plat's 40 lots, you're not going to have to do that.
So then council would see it at first reading?
If it's a zoning issue, yes, right.
So they would see the zoning request, as well as the traffic study that accompanied it?
Right, for the zoning, anything on a rezoning, a PUD rezoning.
Anybody else? Okay, then, it sounds like we want to move forward with that and move forward with that with anyone who's not submitted at this point.
Right.
Okay. Okay, we will then move on to other. There are two things tonight under other. The first thing is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the renewal contract with TDOT relative to the right-of-ways maintenance for 2021 and 2022. Tom?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I apologize for getting this late on the agenda. We got it ready a few days after it closed. But what this is basically is our annual contract with TDOT, so we can get paid back from TDOT for the sweeping, litter control, mowing, and any salting, plowing, or minor road repairs, street restriping that we need to do on any of the TDOT right-of-ways.
Questions for Tom on this? Thank you.
Mayor, we have one other thing I need to add on to others before you get to the next one, please.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm reading through these 50 items. I just realized while we were sitting here that our annual Regional Transportation Authority contract.
The RTA.
Some reason on Agenda Quick, it's already got it listed, populated for the, for the June council meeting, but it didn't get on the workshop. So I'm sure it's something that I did terrible putting it in, but I just wanted to let you know, if we could save a space for that, to have that in.
So we need to save space for the RTA agreement?
And Brian can explain. Actually, he actually had some savings in there.
Yeah, we typically pay $27,000 a year to the RTA. That's for the bus service to Nashville and Murfreesboro that comes through the town. We have some dollars in reserve with them. We did a little research this year. So we're going to be cutting our expense this year to $17,000, but we'll garner the same service, because we're going to take some of the money out of our reserve account. It was a pretty healthy reserve, based on what our expense is with them, and they were in agreements with that, so.
And we're not the only ones that are doing this?
We're not the only ones doing that. So, so the contract will be $17,000 this year.
So we'll put a placeholder, and Jeff, if you can send that out tomorrow to everybody, that way we at least get our eyes on it.
I'll send it out right now, actually.
Perfect, okay. Any questions on that RTA agreement? Okay, Brian and I have been having some discussion about the American Rescue Plan funds, and Brian, can you talk a little bit about the funds, and then we can kind of get into what our discussions have been?
Yes, ma'am. As everybody knows, there was an announcement about the American Rescue Fund, or Rescue Plan, that was coming out, associated dollars from the federal government into the counties, into the state, and into the cities. It's been kind of a moving target for us, and we're doing as much research as we can. We are, we are scheduled to achieve $7.9 million in the total fund. The way the fund works is we'll get 50% of it this year, 50% of it next year. I'm happy to report to you that our first 50% actually hit the bank account last Friday. We have segregated that money. It's not included in our budget, because we weren't sure when we'd get the money and what the caveats were for the use of the money. So, anyway, the first piece has hit. Now, our understanding right now is the money can be used for a couple of different things. It can be non-recurring expenses, but can be used on the utility side, can be used on the expansion of broadband, it can be used for premium payments to employees, with some caveats associated with that, and then it can also be used, and I just went blank.
The lost revenue due to COVID?
The lost revenue, I'm sorry, the lost revenue. And we were kind of excited about that one, thinking, you know, with the hotel motel tax down, with some of the properties that we have that were revenue generators for the town being stopped, you know, stopped during the COVID time, that we would be able to recoup some of those averages. But the problem with, as we got into it, the equation for doing that is it has to be a certain percentage of your overall budget in losses. And as you guys know, we had one month last year that our sales tax actually went down. Tax collection-wise, we stayed pretty whole, so we really will not be able to achieve that, that part of. So, you know, one of the things that the mayor and I've talked about, and I've presented the mayor some, some things to look at, on the possibility of using it to the mayor some, some things to look at, on the, the possibility of using it to, as a premium stimulus, some of the money is a premium stimulus with our employees, so.
And, and I want the public to understand, this is not money that we can just put in our general fund to use any way that we choose to. There are very specific things that it can and can't be used for. But one of those things was a stimulus to our employees that worked during the pandemic. And I want you to know, the employees of the town of Smyrna were here working during the pandemic. And I think to be able to compensate those employees and to let them know, we appreciate the job they did in continuing to keep our community moving forward. I would like for us, based on the recommendation of Brian and his staff, to look at first responders being police, fire, wastewater, and water plant, excluding the admin staff at 2,500. All other employees, a $1,500 stimulus, and then our part-time, or you call, what do you call, I forget what you call them?
It's our full-time, part-time people.
Full-time, part-time people.
That we have, not our, not our seasonal employees and stuff, but those folks that are here 52 weeks a year that work part-time hours. And they were probably the most affected due to their hours. We had to find other places for them to work, or some of their hours were cut, and those type of things.
At $1,000, but not to include elected officials. How do you all, how do you all feel about that?
Well, it's, these funds are earmarked. They can only be used specifically for what they've been designed to be used for. I can't think of a better way, honestly, to show our employees our appreciation for getting us through those hard times, and first responders, and the people that it all applies to. I think, you know, one of the things we've always tried to project up here is that our employees are very, very, very valuable to us. You know, Brian mentioned this earlier, we've always said, when we brought Brian on, we wanted him to make sure our employees were always the focus of what we were all about. So I think this right here just says that in the terms that we're allowed to use the funds for that anyway. Why not show our employees we appreciate what they did during the times that were difficult? So I agree with it.
And I'd like to point out that if, if the council's wishes are to approve these premium stimulus payments to the employees, that is a percentage of the money. It's not the full amount of funds, because I feel like it would be, you know, wrong of us not to look at some other opportunities. So we have some sewer projects and water projects that need to be given a hard look outside the scope of the normal budget. So we're looking to apply some of those funds into some of the infrastructure of the community as well.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
I assume this is current employees, not people that were working back during that time that may not be working for us now, is that correct?
This would be any employee, that was an employee prior to April 1st of this year.
Okay, okay.
That are still on the payroll.
You know, it's pretty easy to forget how scary things were last year at this time, and employees not knowing whether to go to work, or not knowing whether to leave our house or anything. You know, our country's come a long way, and it's, and I think it's good for us to reward the ones who did keep our wheels turning while it was going on.
And this, this should not be seen as a bonus to those employees. This is to help them recoup the, during that time, you know, the different things that happened for our employees from the standpoint of their work, their, their access to work, those type of things. So it's truly more of a stimulus. It's not a bonus. Although, the way this money is allocated back through the town, it would have to go through the tax, you know, as, as part of an income. So, you know, we would still have to deal with those issues, so.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that as a result of the COVID-19, that we provide a stimulus supplemental payment in the amount of $2,500 for our first responders, $1,500 for our general full-time employees, and $1,000 to our general part-time employees, to include everyone that was employed, being employees that were employed as of April 1st of this year. And the funding will be paid by the American Rescue Plan or existing funds. And I would also like to include in this motion that these payments would not include elected officials.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, thank you.
Brian, let's talk about timetable.
Okay, yeah. I want to point out one other fact, that I think it's, I think will be the interest of our public, as they're watching this tonight. We're not the only community looking at this. Other communities are doing this in this area. I won't go into which ones, but I, I got a feeling that most of, of the local government's gonna look to, you know, to help their employees overcome some of these difficulties that we've had this last year. We are ready to move forward with, with the vote tonight. Our goal will be to actually have the checks in the hands of the individuals by next Friday.
Great. Okay, questions for Brian on that? Are we close to 50? Okay, item 49, Rex, are you gonna do this junior report? Item 49 and 50. The April local sales tax and the April state share, where are you gonna do that, junior?
All right. Local sales tax, in April, we collected $1,525,934. That gives us a year-to-date budget surplus of $2,522,273. State share tax, in April, we collected $667,669, and that gives us a year-to-date budget surplus of $335,421. So we're, we're doing well. A lot of that is a reflection of the sales tax, obviously the local and the state, as it come into us. And as far as my report goes, we have started planning for the audit, and our auditor will be here June 21st.
Hard to believe. It's just a never-ending cycle, isn't it?
It's a cycle.
That's right. Thanks, Rex.
Thank you.
Jeff Craig, anything? Mike Moss? That's a first. Chief? Tom? Are we all boycotting tonight, so we're doing? I'm with me, 50 items. Kevin? If you don't have anything to say, I'm good. Mike Strange? Todd? Kathy? Chief? Charles? Did Brian tell all y'all, y'all weren't allowed to get up and talk?
I did not have any conversation about speaking.
Is anybody in the, out in the lobby?
I don't think there's anybody in the lobby. I think they all knew this was a long agenda, and they were.
They're ready to go home. Ms. Diane?
Well, we've had 38 new business licenses, and one of those been crumble cookies.
Oh, that's not good.
I know.
It's not good for my waistline. It may be good for the town, not good for my waistline. Great. Brian, anything?
Mayor, I have a couple of things real quick I'd like to share with the council and the, in the community. It's always fun to get an email from a customer, citizen, that is sharing accolades to our utilities department, and I did receive such from a Graham McKesick, who lives over off of Bailey Collins. And he just, Randy Roberts and David Pruitt came to his rescue on some issues he was having with his sewer line, had it resolved quickly, and he was just very appreciative and sent an email. I've shared this with Mike to make sure the employees see this as well. Couple of things that'll be on the screen here in just a moment, I just want to, we've got a calendar full of events already starting up for the summer. First and foremost, don't forget the 50th anniversary of the great Tennessee Air Show, June 5th and 6th. If you have, need some information about that, please follow our social media here at the town, as we'll be bringing up to-date information and traffic stoppages and those type of things that are associated with the air show will be on our social media. The Depot District Arts and Story Fest is coming up. I don't know, Raquel, you may be gonna talk about this as well. Just wanted to remind everybody of the Art Crawl Saturday, June 5th, from 5:30 to 9:00 at the historic Front Street Smyrna. Simply Smyrna is back, and that will be Saturday, June 12th. Every weekend coming up, we're gonna have plenty of things for you to do here in Smyrna. It's be at the historic Depot District. Thank you to our friends at Carpe Artista for their work to make such a great event, and we are excited about that. Moving into July, July the 2nd, Friday, July the 2nd, get your chairs in place at Lee Victory Park early. I think I've seen some people out there as early as 6:30 in the morning putting their chairs up for fireworks that are happening at 9 o'clock at night.
Who would that be?
I'm not gonna call any names, but there are people that get them out there early. We're really looking for a great event, starting about 5 o'clock on that Friday afternoon. The park will be open and some different exciting events going on. And then, of course, the chief has guaranteed us a premium fireworks display starting at dark, around 9 o'clock, so that should be a great time.
As soon as everybody gets in place, right, Chief?
Town Hall will be closed in observance of Memorial Day, this month, this coming Monday, but that doesn't mean we won't be working. The Parks and Rec Department will be open, of course, our wastewater treatment plant, water plant will be open, and our police and fire will be working. And then I'd like to invite everybody out at 11 o'clock on Memorial Day, on Monday. We will be having an observ, we'll be observ, I can't, my tongue got tied. We'll be observing Memorial Day with our local VFW, and it's a great time to get out and really pay our respects. And I'm very excited to let you know that Lieutenant General Keith Huber retired, will be our guest speaker that day, and he's associated with MTSU through the Charlie Daniels Veterans Opportunity over there. And if you've not met General Huber, he's just a great, great guy. Point out that we're talking on new microphones tonight. We've had some issues with the sound, and everything is working. Now, unfortunately, I've got message up to me that Channel 3 on Comcast's side has froze tonight. Not sure if it's back working now or not, but we are streaming live, and that's available with Channel 3, unfortunately, and it, it's a Comcast issue, not ours, so. But we have new mics, and thank you to Kathy and Brett and Building and Grounds for helping us resolve our sound issue.
Great.
Today is Chief Arnold's birthday. And I will be happy to let you know he's older than I am.
He may have pulled over for that.
He told me today on the phone, if he thought, if he knew he was gonna live this long, he'd be taking better care of himself. Happy birthday, Chief. We hope you had a great day. Mark, I just want to extend personally condolences for the passing of your father. I've been there, it's tough. You know, as we get older, people think, you know, you kind of go away from your family, but my father's been gone now for several years, and his, his name and number is still in my, my phone, I can't take it out, and I can't tell you how many times I wished I could have pushed the button and talked to him. So condolences, and we wish you the very best, and your family is in our prayers. The last thing I will say is, I think I can speak freely here, on behalf of the employees of the town of Smyrna, I want to thank the council for what you just did, for providing for our employees through this stimulus package that we, we were very honored to receive from the federal government. But I can't think of a better way to help our employees, and this, this money will mean a lot to them. So, thank you for the vote, and thank you for the confidence of what we're doing.
And if you will, on that note, will you get an email out to all the employees?
I will get something out to them in the morning.
Perfect. Jeff?
Obviously, we reviewed about 50 contracts in the last two weeks, prior to this meeting. And then, like to say, happy birthday to my, my wife will be 30 years old on Saturday.
Oh.
Good for her.
Very good. Happy birthday to Katie.
Yes, right.
Ms. Diane, I just thought about all those contracts I've gotta sign after the next meeting. We may just need to pack a lunch for, until the next morning, so.
Exactly.
Raquel?
Condolences to you, Mark, and to your family. Happy birthday, Chief. Hope it's been a good day. And I'd just like to ask everybody to take a moment to recognize those who gave their lives for this country on this coming Memorial Day.
Hey, Chief?
Also condolences to Mark and all of his family, his brothers. It's a, it's a tough, it's a tough loss, and we just have to push forward with it. And same thing with the Hardeman family. Ms. Helen was a fine lady, and known her a very, very long time, and she'll be missed. Also, Memorial Day on Monday, give thoughts and thanks to those who fought and died for us. And also, Mayor Yester, I'm gonna ask you to, please be kind and shop local.
Why do you always address that to me?
Because you, no, never mind.
Be kind, H G.
Yeah, that's what, it came into my head.
Tim?
Thank you to our veterans and their families who gave the ultimate sacrifice. One day's not enough, but, you know, we'll, we'll set aside time to thank them. With pride, I can announce that my grandson Tyler Hankins graduated from boot camp for the Air Force, and he's on his way soon to Virginia. He's been in Texas. I gave him a briefing of all the fun things to do in Texas. Of course, he didn't get to do any of them. Can't understand why. Condolences to the Hardeman family, certainly. Mark, condolences to you and Tony and Dan, spouses. Mark and I go back a long way. Y'all have heard this story, and you'll continue to see it. I got called in one day to beat Mark up, and was in dispute over a treehouse or treefort, whatever, whatever we called it at the time. Mark showed me how I had been misled by a brother and a cousin who endured my wrath that afternoon. But from that, we became very good friends, and from that, our, our parents were, were very close, and, you know, we ate together and went to church together. We did a lot of things together. As a matter of fact, when our moms were in the kitchen cooking, I often thought I was watching an episode of The Lucy Show, and couldn't figure out why they had such a great time. But Mark, your dad always left such a great impression with me. Gentleman in every sense of the word, kind, quick-witted, humor above all, and a godly man. And I just want to let you know how much I feel your loss, and know that, how much I care. Thanks.
Jerry?
So, my condolences as well. I really am sorry. And I know we've talked earlier this week, but just, you guys have been our prayers and our thoughts, and we're there for whatever you need, if we can help you with anything, okay?
Also, I had the Hardeman family mentioned as well, wrote down as well, and Mr. Sheen and Jack and Debbie, I sent out my condolences to your, to your family as well. Tim, I had, had noticed that as well about your grandson today, and I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you. We're so much appreciated. And congratulations to all the graduates out there. I know we've had a lot of them that have kids that have graduated. It's probably not the best year to graduate. You didn't get to spend a whole lot of, as much time with the, with your, your fellow classmates, but congratulations and best in everything that you do, whether it's college or something else, so. The Memorial Day as well, certainly want to say thank you for those that, that served, but thank you for those that, that paid the ultimate sacrifice, and we, it's not forgotten, and it's very much appreciated. You're probably gonna talk about it, Mayor Yester, but yesterday at the Freedom Playground was, was awesome. The, it was just great seeing all those kids run out there. I know they were just ready for us to get through the program, and so they could get out, out there and play. But Parks Department, Chief, Chief, thank you guys for all that you did. It was just, I heard nothing but accolades for everything, and that's something to be proud of out there. It's, it really is. And just for all those that made that possible Rotary Club and their, their vision there, so, so much appreciated for that. vision there, so, so much appreciated for that, so. Mayor, that's all I got.
Thanks. Mark?
Well, so, Jeff, about a month or so ago, we had to evaluate you and your performance here at the city, and we appreciate you. We did the same thing with Brian today, and Brian, I want you to know, we appreciate everything you've done as well. The, you know, it's been a tough year. It's been a hard year to operate a town on a big budget that we have and keep everybody safe and healthy here at the city as well, so. Just to go without saying, I appreciate what you two gentlemen do for our city, and thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership. To all the staff, the same thing. I know it trickles down. It's not just one person. I've heard you say, Brian, many, many times, it's not me, it's my team. And so, to all these people sitting out here watching us this evening in the audience, that's your team right there, a big part of them, as well as the employees, so just want to say thank you for that. Jerry mentioned the graduates, and of course, my wife was involved in the school system all year long again, and so, to the teachers, school is out, and we appreciate all the teachers and the jobs that they've done this year. It's also been a tough year for them. To all the staff members at school and bus drivers, everything affiliated with the school program, it's been a hard year, and I just want to tell them how much I appreciate the work they did. Speaking of my wife being at the school, next time we meet will be beyond her birthday, so I'm going to wish her a happy birthday this evening, although she texted me and said that Comcast has froze up, and I can't hear a doggone thing you're saying. I told her, I said, "Social media is not backed up, and so I'm going to put it out there." So, happy birthday to Connie. To Helen Hardeman's family, Jean, Jean and I worked together for a lot of years over at the real estate office that I once was at, he was at with me, and solid good guy, and Helen would just make you laugh. She, she just had a light about her, and so, they celebrated, I think, 72 years of marriage, so those two right there are a prime example of lovebirds. And so, he's lost his wife, and so, to Jean and the family, I just want to give them my strongest prayers and condolences. Memorial Day is approaching. Everybody's mentioned that tonight. I come from a family of Air Force parents. Mom passed away seven years ago, and as you've heard, my dad passed away this past week. He served our country for 23 years. He was in the Air Force and retired, so, love him, going to miss him. I know he's with mom now, and one of the things dad's always taught us to do is to understand that there's a, there's a better place. You know, he's a God-fearing man, and he taught all of his sons to feel the same way, and so we have that hope now. So, he's with Jesus, and I'm happy to know that, so. He's no longer in pain. His Parkinson's is gone. I will miss him.
Thanks, Mark. A couple of housekeeping items first is our Top Gun Night Run registration is open. You can visit the town's website to learn more and to register. This year's run will be held at Lee Victory Recreation Park at 7:00 PM on November 21st, and we hope you will come out and join us. We'd like to congratulate all of the class of 2021. We wish you all the best in your next chapter, wherever you choose to go, wherever you choose to go, and whatever you choose to do, we hope that you will always consider Smyrna home. So, good luck to each one of you. Mark?
Sorry about your daddy. We've talked a couple of times this week. I can't imagine how difficult that is, but know that each one of us are thinking about you.
Thanks.
Also, condolences to the Hardeman family. Ms. Hardeman, gosh, she was just classic. I mean, every time you saw her, she was put together, so, just, yes, very fun. I would agree. Thanks to News 2, who came out and did our News 2 Give Back to our first responders for the tornado. We appreciate you for doing that. Chief, thanks for the housing ceremony of the new rig. It was, I told somebody the other day, it's one of those things that makes Smyrna a great community in which to live. We, we don't forget those little things that can be done that make events special, so thanks for what you did. I got to participate yesterday in the groundbreaking for the new Hope Clinic building, which is an organization, the Primary and Hope Care Clinic, which provides health care and dental care and pharmaceuticals for people who have no insurance or who are underinsured. We're, they're currently here in Smyrna over behind Witz Barbecue, but we just broke ground yesterday right beside TCAT, and it will be a facility that will be very similar to the one that is in Murfreesboro, so a huge asset and being able to expand. I also want to thank everybody involved with the Freedom Playground. We got to break ground yesterday on an absolutely wonderful facility. It is going to give all children the ability to explore and play together and build lifelong friendships, and we got to see that, and that was possible because of the Rotary Club, the Town of Smyrna, the State of Tennessee, and the Christie-Houston Foundation, as well as local businesses and individuals that supported the project. This is just phase one. There will be a phase two, which will include bathrooms as well. But if you get an opportunity, go out and check it out. It is directly behind the Jeff Kous Memorial, and kind of the theme is carried on with the blue and the yellow and the plane theme, so thanks to everybody who made that possible. When you saw those children out there playing, and there were children that were in wheelchairs, and there were even some adults that were on walkers that were all out participating, and I saw on Facebook last night, one of the moms, who's a friend of mine, said, you know, it was nice for kids to be able to come up and ask, why, why is this child like this? And they were able to have conversation, and once the child had their question asked, they were good with it, and they went right on playing again. And so, I think it's going to open up some dialogue and some discussion, and hopefully all citizens in the Town of Smyrna can feel accepted. So, anything else tonight? If nothing else, we're adjourned.